Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6:30. Let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, June 6th. Let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let's see, we have full board and then some. Let's see, our full members who are not here, what's that? You cannot vote, or you could vote, or, let's see, who here are all the alternates, all you and you and you. And we have two full members missing, Neil and Paul, so we can put two people into voting positions, right? Who wants to, if you're okay sitting out, let's go with Nelson and Colleen. All right, let's see, the usual reminders, please, everybody that's here representing an applicant or the public, make sure your microphone is turned on and you speak clearly into it so the folks at home can hear you and that the minutes can be made accurately from the record. Let's see. Because there are no applications received for our May 16th meeting, the next planning board meeting is currently scheduled for, why would it say May 16th? June 20th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. I don't forget the May 16th thing, looks like that was an artifact from a prior note. What's that?
I said good catch.
No, well, I didn't catch it, I just kind of dropped it right there in the beginning, it would have caught it like five minutes ago, I wouldn't have read it. Anyway, okay, there, board members, there is a non-meeting at 5:45 PM on that June 20th, 2023 date in order to receive legal advice from the town's attorney. Let's see, I think that covers all of our organizational activities. With that in mind, we have no items for a consent agenda, and that brings us to item three on our agenda, which is start in Realty LLC as the applicant and owner, and we're here for continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan for the addition of a gas station, convenience store, and drive-through coffee shop at the site of an existing car wash. The parcels located at 376 DW Highway in the C2 General Commercial and Oxford Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts, Tax Map 4D3, Lot 2, Case Planning Board 2022-40. This has been continued from the November 15th and December 20th, 2022 meetings, and the January 17th, February 21st, March 21st, and April 18th Planning Board, 2023 Planning Board meetings. Colleen, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Just that the applicant was last before the board on April 18th. Since that date, the applicant has submitted revised plans.
Can you pull the microphone a little closer?
Sorry about that. So again, the applicant was last before the board on April 18th. Since that date, the applicant has submitted revised plans. It was after the submitted date, so those plans were distributed to various departments, but no comments have been received as of yet.
Thank you, and welcome, Colleen. I think this is the first time you've had one of our meetings without the assistance of Robert or Tim, so flying solo tonight, I'm sure you'll be great.
I am, so thrilled.
Didn't really sound thrilled, but I've heard thrilled before, didn't sound anything like that. Please introduce yourself and tell us where we're at with the project.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Bring it a little bit closer.
A little closer, okay, perfect. Good evening, my name is Erin Lambert, I'm with Wilcox and Barton. I am the Director of Civil Engineering Services. You're probably familiar with David Frothingham. He sends his apologies, he couldn't be here. He had back surgery last Wednesday and he hasn't yet been cleared to travel. But I understand that the staff report recommends continuing a portion of the hearing, and he will certainly be at the next hearing. So again, David sends his apologies. I will do my best to answer questions. If I can't answer them, I will bring them back. But since David was last here, we submitted a street skate plan, which is in your packet, as well as a landscape plan. A couple of things that were changed, I understand a response to concerns from the planning board and also the fire department. The dumpster was relocated. It was previously in the southwest corner, it's now in the northwest corner. And what that does is it opens up a little more access around the rear of the building. The small, this is since December, I guess, the request for the building addition for the small convenience store has been removed. Circulation around the site has been changed to one-way in a counterclockwise direction. As I mentioned, the dumpster has been moved to the southwest corner, which allows for more traffic, space for traffic circulation around the back of the building and for flexibility for the refuse. It's certainly in an easier location for the trucks to pick up.
Southwest or southeast?
Northwest, I apologize. It was in the southwest and now it's in the northwest, it's up here in this corner right here.
Okay, I don't think that's northwest though.
I believe north is to the right of the page. I could scroll out so we can see the entire plan. Yes, so north is relatively to the right of the page, so I would think it was previously in this southwest corner, it is now in the northwest corner. It took over two parking spaces, which I understand were not required.
And you mentioned that the convenience store is gone?
Yes, yes, so the only uses in the building are the car wash and the coffee shop with drive-through. There's no more convenience store located on the property. Yeah, and I heard mention of a revised waiver being circulated, so there are, there are still three waivers. Two are described in the staff report and the third is a partial waiver. So the street skate plan that we mentioned shows renderings for the proposed canopy. And we are not asking for relief, a waiver for providing renderings for that. However, because it's an existing building and the addition or the rebuilt portion is in the back, not seen from the street and will be smaller, those materials will be matched in like-kind. So the waiver request is simply to not provide a rendering of the existing building, because it's going to look as it does in the photographs. But this is a rendering of the canopy. And as you can see, it will be 15 feet high to the bottom of the canopy, 24 feet wide. And these pictures down below are actual photos of what the canopy will look like. I understand the staff report requests more information on materials, and we just got that, and those will be provided. But this is new information from, since the last hearing.
So the example-style canopies that you have included have signage on them?
Correct.
And I don't recall off the top of my head what their current state of regulation is for signs on canopies, but I know it always is a discussion item. And I think that what we had, what our regulations don't permit is sort of where the whole canopy essentially illuminates.
Okay.
And this is obviously just a small sign that illuminates, you know, illuminates just the letters. But check with staff and make sure that what you're proposing has the sign that you guys think that you want and that we can, you know, potentially approve. Will this be branded mobile, or is that just a example?
I don't know the answer to that question, I apologize. I will find out.
Okay.
So yes, we will certainly confirm the desired sign, make sure it conforms with your regulations and check with staff on both size and lighting.
It seems like mobile has been a brand that's being phased out and it's like all-tell or something like that these days.
It might be, and honestly, I do civil engineering and David does as well, and he's the one that really heads up our tank design. So I don't know the answer to that, but I will certainly find out.
I saw something in the narrative that said branding to be determined. Now that may have been an old.
That's what I was thinking, I wasn't sure if a commitment had been made because it's on here.
But I believe it's to be determined.
It doesn't particularly matter to our review what brand it is, it's just what kind of sign it's going to be on the canopy. So with the peaked canopy, which I think does aesthetically look very nice compared to the old flat-style canopies with the light illuminated rim, is there sort of fire suppression equipment and all of that up in the canopy that deals with all the requirements for that?
Correct, yes, that will have to comply with state and NFPA requirements.
Okay. Please continue.
So the last thing, we did submit a landscape plan. I know that initially had been a request to waive providing a landscape plan to show the landscape on the site plan. That portion of the waiver request was withdrawn, so there is a landscape plan. It's my understanding there's still a waiver request for the interior islands, which is supported by staff. So it does meet the requirements for street trees and plantings, and that was included in the packet, which will be reviewed by staff.
So this particular plan, the one that's on screen, has trees around the canopy, at least at one end.
Yes.
Now, what would the regulation require that you don't wish to provide?
I apologize, can you say that one more time?
What would our regulation require in addition to this that you do not wish to provide?
I believe.
For the internal island landscaping?
I believe it's internal island landscaping. So the waiver request is to, regarding the minimum percentage of the overall interior of a parking lot to be dedicated to landscaping. And indicates that staff has no issue with the request, given the site is already developed and compliant with the requirement, it would be extremely difficult given the proposed improvements.
So typically in the waiver it would say, "We intend to provide 5%, whereas 11% is required," or something like that, that would give us a sense of what it is that you're...
I will find that, I just read up on that. I do believe it's 5%.
I'm sorry for putting you on the spot.
No, it's totally fine, I should have been prepared to know that answer. So the proposed landscaping areas are included in the site plan. The project proposes 5,250 square feet of parking lot area located on the side of the building, which requires an area of 420 square feet, 8% of the parking lot. The project, the proposal includes 326 square feet of landscaped islands, so it looks like we are shy by just under 100 square feet. I don't know what percentage that is, but it is slightly less than the 8% or the 420 square feet that's required.
Yeah, it looks like you got 6-ish percent and you need eight. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I understand we responded to staff comments from Fussin O'Neil, and we won't receive comments back from them until after conditional approval. We are anticipating getting comments from DPW as well as the fire department, and we'll respond to those upon receipt. And that's what I have for my presentation.
Thank you all. Does any member of the board have questions? Nelson, go ahead.
Oh, are you on the survey? Yep. Yep. All right, yep, so the second page of the.
Existing conditions.
The existing conditions plan, yep.
Oh, sorry, sorry, the mic was off. I'm asking about page two of three on the submitted site plan.
Okay.
And I wanted to know if, why that was included. What is that, oh, not, it's page two, it's really page three of three, which seems to go off of your site and runs up Route 3. And I didn't know why that was included. Is there some work that you're doing in that area that I don't know about?
I know there are off-site improvements that are required as part of the project, extending the acceleration and deceleration lanes. So if we have additional survey there, it's the existing condition that was required so that we could then show the extent of the widening of those areas, so that's why they would be on there. It certainly draws it out quite a bit, and that's because the surveyor has left it, you know, north-south, so it's really drawn out. I believe that this plan set includes that plan, and I can certainly look for it here.
What you say makes sense, I didn't realize, I didn't appreciate it.
Yeah, so if we look here, if you go through the plan set a little bit further, there are plans that detail those improvements that are required in order to provide the additional acceleration and deceleration lane. So if you look at C1.6, it shows those improvements to DW Highway. And on the survey, it's just, it makes it quite large.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The other question I had to do was with the boundary between your property and the property that goes up the hill.
Okay.
First of all, it's very close, but it looks like you don't actually intrude over the property there. But what is that banking there? Is there something, getting to the point, is there something that we can do with landscaping or greening? Is it green already? I haven't gone and looked at it, but you know, when you look at this site, that's what you're going to see.
Sure, I believe it is. There's a retaining wall and a slope above it that looks like, oh, the pictures aren't loading, that looks like a tree line. Yep, so I believe if I zoom in here, so this is the, what would be the west side of the site? Is this the side you're asking about? Okay, so there is a retaining wall, and then there are some trees and vegetation on that slope above it, and we are proposing to keep all of our improvements on the interior side of the retaining wall, so we're not making any changes to that.
What is the retaining wall made of? Is that cement blocks or something?
It's cement blocks.
Okay, I was hoping maybe we could do something there to make it look.
Was that retaining wall part of a prior site plan approval or construction? Or it's sort of a non-traditional material or a non-traditional way of making a retaining wall? And I don't know if it was sort of done to solve a problem kind of by an owner at one point, or?
It's been there as long as I can remember.
Certainly is necessary, but yeah, just stacking up the blocks like that doesn't look like the usual retaining wall.
Yeah, they're pretty big. I mean, they're not sort of the manicured decorative ones you see from Allen Block or Ready Rock, but they are big blocks, and so they would have been, and you can see this lower course is embedded, which we like to see. So it does look like it's structurally sound. Those are big, they're usually two by two or three by three.
Yeah, it looks like three by three.
Yeah.
It's presently in place, you say?
Correct, yeah, this is, this is an actual photo of the site that was included in the packet, so that retaining wall and the vegetation above it is existing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions, anyone? The step that's before us is deciding whether the application is complete. And thanks to our legislature, we've sort of got this bizarre way that we've got to almost decide waivers at the same time you're deciding it's complete, because it's not complete if you're not going to grant the waivers. We've got these three waivers that are there for the percentage of overall interior parking, the requirement to identify existing wetlands, and the building renderings. And that is sort of inextricably tied to this question of completeness. So, board members.
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, please.
Sorry, before we get to that motion, is there a sign for the business anywhere? I couldn't see one.
In existence or on the plans for the picture?
On the plans, because I'm not seeing a sign that is independent of what's already on the building. And even then, where it says "car wash," is that even a legal sign here in town? It seems like it would exceed the code for the sign size.
Sure.
So although we're not, it's already in existence, now we're touching the building, so.
I don't know if there's been a proposal for a marquee sign or something like that. Typically, those aren't planning board approved. But this existing sign on the building may be something to have an answer about from our staff or something on our continuance between meetings. I don't know what its status is.
Because I just wondered, I mean, is this going to be like no name?
I'm sure.
You know what I'm saying? Exactly, which is I'm saying, where does the sign go?
Right, so I don't see a new sign on the site plan, and I apologize if I'm speaking out of turn. But I do see that there is the Patriot Car Wash sign, I actually drove by the site today on my way to this meeting. And so that car wash sign is in the northeast corner, which is, if you're looking up at the screen, it's right here. So I don't see on here any plans to change that. We certainly can find out, and any new signs would need to conform with your ordinance and any permits that are required.
And it appears from our plan that the new name is Patriots Gas Station or something.
Car Wash, Patriots Car Wash is what it says on.
On here, but that's the existing name is. It is the same owner. We're working on this for the current owner of the property.
And what signs, can you show the photographs of the building from the street again?
Absolutely.
What signs are on it today?
It says "Car Wash" with a, the one is there.
On the side.
Yeah, those are actually on the windows.
On the north elevation on the windows.
Those are not regarded as signs.
And then this is on the east elevation, so this is what you see when you're driving on the road, so it just says "Car Wash." It doesn't identify the name of the business. And then I believe.
You have a marquee sign at the northeast corner as well.
Yeah, did you see that last picture?
Oh, did I miss it? I apologize.
Yep.
There it is, okay. Yeah, I was hoping there'd be a better one from that side, but that is the existing Patriot Car Wash sign, which is in the northeast landscape island, corner of the property. Thought we'd have a better picture of that, but we don't. Nope, that's blank, sorry.
Okay.
So those are the two signs that exist today.
Barbara, would it satisfy your concerns if we moved ahead but had the staff sort out the situation of the signs between two meetings?
Mm-hmm.
Then that brings us back to the question of completeness, and although we don't necessarily have to word a complicated motion that has waivers in it too, if we make a motion and vote for completeness, the next thing we're going to do is vote on these waivers and should act consistently. Is there a motion for completeness?
I also move.
Is there a second? Second by Nelson. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay. Is there a motion to grant the three waivers, or at least one of them at a time, whichever you prefer?
One at a time.
We grant the three waivers.
So a motion to grant the three waivers, is there a second? Second by Nelson. Barbara, you wanted to do them separately, was there a reason for that?
No, I guess I can live with three at once.
Okay. Any further discussion on waivers?
Specific circumstances relative to the site plan, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, so that is the.
Second one.
First, second criteria?
Yep.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of granting the waivers according to the second, secondary criteria, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700 to grant the waivers. General discussion with the applicant, and then we need to do a public hearing? Do you have any general questions about the whole proposal from the applicant? I think the applicant's willingness to forego the small convenience store made a big difference in how the site functions. And I think it gives you enough room to actually do what you're trying to do. I know that there would be interest in having a bypass lane that completely avoided your driving, your queuing lines, but I don't see that that's even possible on the site, so I think we'll have to live with that limitation. Other than that, I think the proposal has been worked through quite extensively. There is still the recommendation by staff that we continue it.
Yeah, so that we can complete the reviews by consultants, I think we should hold on.
Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in on this one? And you'll certainly have an opportunity to do so at the next meeting if we continue this, which it appears we're going to. No butters, nobody wants to weigh in? Okay, then we'll temporarily close the public hearing and allow it to reopen next time for people if they have any further comments. What is the recommendation for when we would come back? Is it?
July 18th.
July 18th meeting? Colleen, was that you suggesting that?
Yep.
Okay.
That's what's in the memo.
What is the will of the board with respect to a potential continuous to July 18th? Nelson makes the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to continue this hearing until July 18th in order to give our staff time for review of the.
Comments and amendments. Without further notice, two butters.
Without further notice, two butters.
Is there a second? Second by Barbara. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you very much, we'll see you or your team in a month. Okay. Item four on our agenda is Michael and Carol Ann Karen. As the applicant and owner, review for consideration of a conditional use permit to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit above an existing garage. The parcels located at 12 Collins Ave in the R1 Residential District, Oxford Conservation District and Elderly Housing Overlay District, Tax Map 6D, Lot 564, Case Planning Board 2023-15. Colleen, is there anything that we should know before we hear from the applicant?
The applicant is seeking, oh, sorry, is proposing to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit above an existing garage. They were before the zoning board of adjustments on May 31st and received two variances. One for the ADU size to be larger than the minimum, or the maximum, 1,000 square feet. And then the other one was for the minimum lot size needed for that size of ADU, and I believe that is it.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself for the record and tell us about your proposal.
So my name's Michael Karen, and this is my wife Carol Ann. We're the owners of the property. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can.
Basically, we're building a accessory dwelling unit for my adult child who needs some support from family to deal with medical issues and such like that, but trying to give her a place of her own, so she has some privacy and some independence that's due to an adult. Hope that we can answer any of your questions or concerns about what we've done or what we're doing. Looking at the comments that were in the package that we received, we have addressed the does-nots with our waivers sought before the zoning board. And aside from that, it looks like you were concerned that we will be living in one of the units, we will be. We were concerned with the size of the septic system being capable of handling the load. We aren't adding any additional people to this property, it's the same people that have been living in this property. And from a previous business that we had in the area, we had already had the septic system redone and to capacity beyond our needs. We had a bakery, so we had sized the septic system to handle the needs of washing and cleaning up bakery duties. So the unit that we have installed now is capable of handling a family much larger than what we have and what we're supporting. So there should be no problem with septic. Beyond that, it also mentions that we will provide a restrictive covenant to keep the property from being turned into apartments or condos or whatever, and of course, that's another intent, and we're happy to comply with that. If there's anything else that I can answer or questions about, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay, this seems like a fairly simple proposal to me. I don't have any questions about it. Nelson, you have some questions?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Is this building, did you have a swimming pool in this?
Not in this building. We've gone through a few businesses. We had a bakery, we cleared out the bakery, and we got one of those indoor low-swing pools. And my wife was a swim coach for a number of years, we coached out of there. And once we, once my wife sort of retired from that for physical reasons, we dismantled the pool, sold it to another coach who's using it somewhere else now. My daughter is currently using that space as an apartment. We're not getting any younger. We would like to reclaim that space as office space for ourselves. And as such, we've decided that she's young, she can go up and downstairs. And we had this bonus room that we had built above the garage that we had intended to use for a rec room, but it's a big open area and was easily renovated into a livable space with just a few additions. So that's what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Okay, well, yeah, the plan that we received shows it as a rec room, and doesn't look like there's any place to sleep if you're living up there.
So originally, that was the intent. The, I believe we filed a revised plan that includes a bathroom, a laundry room, and a small galley kitchen, but it is very much a studio layout. It's just one large area with the bedroom, living room, kitchen, all in the same room.
Are we looking at the right plan? Because.
I think we are. I just.
Yeah, it's there.
If you remove the pool table and the couch, which is essentially just furniture, that's what he, that's what he's proposing.
You put a bed somewhere.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah. Yep.
No, no interior walls.
So there.
It's just open.
Bathroom has walls.
Yeah, the bathroom has walls, but other than that.
And then the bathroom wall was extended to make a laundry room.
Yep.
But not in the great room. There's no.
Right, no, no walls.
There's no quote unquote bedrooms. It's just a studio apartment.
Also be mindful to keep our interest in the interior walls to a minimum since it's out of our scope. But obviously, no, no, curiosity is fine. That's cool to you for that, but I don't want to go too far. And build whatever interior walls you feel like having a permit for.
Bob? Just to clarify, as I understand it, there's no changes made to the exterior of the building.
None.
Current access to the building is via a door downstairs in the back.
Correct.
You're going to retain that. And you come in that back door that's already there, go up the stairs that's already there, and the apartment is at the top. So there's nothing different outside, no additional driveways, no additional stair, outside stairwells or anything like that.
From the exterior, there's no change from the garage as it stands.
So if you didn't tell us we were doing this, we wouldn't know.
Correct.
The, I want to, I, I know that I just was sort of tongue in cheek saying build whatever interior walls you want, but I do want to be clear that what you're proposing is a studio apartment. And if you decided later that you wanted it to be a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom or something like that, I don't know whether they would fit there or not. Yeah, they would, they'd fit there pretty well. That's a different approval, and you should go back and talk about that. But that's a much more intense use than a studio, so.
Yes.
Nelson, you have other questions?
Yeah, is the downstairs still a garage?
So the downstairs is a garage and a workshop.
Yeah. Now, there's no, I don't know how the building codes read, but are you allowed to sleep in a room that's connected to a garage? I, I just don't know.
Yeah. My in-law apartment is completely over a three-car garage.
Yeah, but is it, it doesn't close, there's no doors to close here or anything that I see.
Yes, there are.
At the top of the stairs.
At the top of the stairs.
Bottom of the stairs.
And at the bottom of the stairs. And the garage has been cheat rocked with fire grade cheat rock as per the building inspector to make sure that everything is, is up to snuff.
Is there a secondary egress?
Blessing.
From the apartment, there is the primary egress is through the stairwell leading down. There is no secondary egress. If that were required, we'd have to put in some kind of ladder or emergency exit kind of.
Because when we did our basement room over for sleeping, we had to have another exit. Yeah, so I don't know what Meramec.
There's an expert over there behind you.
Yeah.
You would need to have a window that's properly sized for an emergency escape window. That's all you would need.
Even though it's on the second floor?
Yeah, you could throw a ladder out. Yeah. I just know that's a big issue. The windows are, are that would be large enough to egress through. That's good.
Okay. So now we know the answer to that. Any other questions about the proposal from anyone? Okay. It doesn't look from the staff memo that this requires a finding of completeness. We could certainly hear from any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in if there are any. Going once, twice? No, no abutters wish to weigh in? And so the staff has given us the recommendation. What's that for to grant final approval subject to the conditions in the memo?
Yep.
I'm so moved.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? You are seven zero zero approved. Thank you.
Thank you. And I've said it before, I commend you for doing this kind of thing because this is the right thing to do with family.
Okay. Item five on our agenda is Fidelity Investments as the applicant and FMR Meramec Realty Trust. FID is the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of waiver of full site plan review to permit a variety of temporary event uses onsite at the Fidelity Investments campus. The parcels are located at one Spartan Way and two Contra Way in the I2 Industrial and Oxford Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 2C Lot 113 and Tax Map 3C Lot 191. Case Planning Board 2023-16. Colleen, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
The applicant is seeking full site plan review to allow periodic and temporary outdoor events for Fidelity employees and their guests. Does not account for large-scale public events, but this is just for private events for their employees and families.
Okay.
That was it.
Thank you, Colleen, and I know that this is probably a tough question, given how you've only recently joined our team. But have, have we always regulated businesses having events for their employees on their site? Why are, why are we?
I believe so. I could not explain that. I think that's best asked by Robert or answered by Robert.
Excellent. We certainly can follow up on that, and it doesn't stop us from taking up this particular proposal, but we ought to put it on our to-do list to delete that from our regulations.
I did talk to Robert about this because I was also confused, saying, why are we doing this? And I believe it is similar to, or the fact that they're going to have non-employees potentially there is the reason that, I, I don't agree or disagree. I'm just saying this is, was Robert's comment was that because they're having potentially non-employees, guests, employees, families, that they wanted bases covered.
Yeah, well, we should certainly delete that from our regulations still. Because I mean, I get the idea if it's open to the public, like Anheuser-Busch does their Rib Fest and all of those kinds of things. That's a whole different thing. SJ with Tomahawk, that's totally different thing. But a company with its own employees and family members, there's, this is just.
Silly.
Beyond intrusive, I think. So anyway, what do you got for us?
Good evening. My name is Mark Verostik. I'm a senior project engineer with VHB here tonight on behalf of Fidelity. With me is Ken Dodd with Fidelity Investments. If there's any questions that he can help answer. But I think it's a pretty straightforward application. It's, it's for temporary, occasional outdoor uses on, on site. I think partial answer to the question of why, why we're here. They have been holding, I mean, they have a, a large soccer field and a, and a baseball field, and they recently built pavilion onsite, and they've, they've held events there in the past. And I think, and, and they've gone through the appropriate departments. If there was, if they put up a tent and they had to have the, the space inspected. They've, they've pulled those individual permits with the town. I think the most recently it came up, and somebody asked the question whether or not it had been approved through the planning department. So that's, I think that kind of started us on this path.
I, I definitely appreciate everybody's desire to be in full compliance and to check and make sure and belt and suspenders and those kinds of things. And I think that we had an application from Fidelity to put, add a couple of food trucks here and there for certain things with employees. And maybe there was a couple of other things in addition to food trucks that were along with it. But yeah, we need to get out of the business of this level of scrutiny, I think. So I didn't mean to interrupt your presentation. If you want to walk us through what you have proposed, we can certainly get your application moved along as quickly as we can.
Sure, it's, it's a pretty small presentation. So the area in blue onsite here pretty much encompasses the existing developed area of the, of the property and within which I think, as is stated in the description of the application, you know, it wouldn't be, it would not be intended to hold, hold an event that would occupy the entire space, but that outdoor events could happen anywhere within that space at a given time. There could be things such as, you know, events in the parking lot, in any given parking lot or, or in the athletic fields and that sort of thing. So we just tried to cover the bases with encompassing the developed area of the site there. And as part of the application, we did request a waiver from full site plan review as, you know, we're not proposing any new construction, any new site work, any new uses. Really, the, the uses are ancillary to the existing office function of the, of the property. So that's, that's pretty much it for the, the presentation. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Board members, do you have any questions? The first, Nelson?
Yeah, no problem.
The first issue before us is completeness, which, because they're waiving full site plan review, sort of comes attached to that question. Is there a motion to find the application complete?
So moved.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero, is there a motion to waive full site plan review?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Jamie seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? Seeing none, is there a motion to dispose of the application in one way or another?
I make a motion to find that with the granted waiver of full site plan review and the recommended conditions of approval, the application meets all applicable regulatory requirements necessary. And further to grant conditional final approval to the application subject to recommendations, conditions of approval present to the staff memo dated June 1st, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Several of them. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero, thank you for coming in and going through the process. We'll see if we can't streamline our process so that we don't make you do that again.
Appreciate the board's time. Thank you very much.
Okay. Item six on our agenda is Planning and Zoning Administrator's Report and Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Other Items of Concern. Colleen, have you any report for us?
I do not.
Do we have any questions for staff? We do not. Okay, then other items of concern anybody wishes to discuss? Seeing none. Item seven on our agenda then is the approval of the minutes of May 16th, 2023. Is there a second?
I have, there's a typo.
So there's a second with a change? Jamie has a change? Go ahead.
Yeah, just in the item one, the call to order, my name is Miss Bell.
You're going to be all picky about that.
Just say.
I love it.
It was fine, but I just.
All right, let's spell Jamie's name right. Which page is it on?
It's just on the first one, number one. Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Looks like Nelson, you got more stuff?
No, I just was excusing myself for having missed that typo. Because I usually pick up typos. I apologize.
And normally I let them go, but you brought up typos before, and I thought I'd bring it up since you normally would get it. So I figured I'd bring up my own.
There you go. Okay. With the correction of a typo and Jamie's second, is there any other discussion on the minutes? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? The minutes are approved seven zero zero. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Don't forget to turn your microphones off.